Anderson?
Here.
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 Here. And stand and pledge. Pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right, move to item 1.2, adoption of the agendas. There are motion to approve.
Seven.
Second. Discussion.
Anderson?
Yes.
Sha?
Yes.
Laje?
Yes.
Yes.
Wait, item 1.3, approval of the May 30th, 2019 meeting minutes. There are motion to approve. So.
Second.
Discussion.
Anderson?
Yes.
Sha?
Yes.
Laje?
Yes.
Yes.
Right. Mr. President?
Yes, Mr. President, members of the board, we have a special presentation tonight and we're waiting on one more administrator who will give her some recognition a little bit. Jamie, Brooke, and Jimmy, come on up here first. These three are three of the team leaders from each building that helped us with the Kaufman YMCA fundraising campaign this year. So, we have been increasing over the last few years. Last year, we hit 9,000, which was the best year we had. All three of them were part of the campaign last year. We were the second highest fundraising organization within the Kaufman YMCA and these guys set a goal to break 9,000. And this year, they hit 10,125. And I want you guys to come over here because I want you to present it to one of the best stakeholders that we have here in our district. And Garrett's going to get a picture here. David Thompson's with us from the Kaufman YMCA to receive this check. And we just really appreciate the efforts that the buildings did and we wanted to present that and thank Kaufman for their great partnership with our school district. Hold on, hold on. Can you go on up to the board president in there?
I can't high five. I could've just said.
Hold that check, Jamie, like you're presenting it. There you go. Good job. Awesome.
Thank you very much.
And before David talks, I do want to say, each one of these buildings had one leader. Jimmy led the high school. Brooke actually did double duty this year by leading the junior high and intermediate. Jamie was in charge of five points. And Dennis was Brandon Grubinoff. And Jessica Jones, our assistant principal, led third grade. And she's going to walk in, I'm sure, just as Dave is leading. But that team masked the troops. They got staff together, they got students together, they did campaigns. And $10,125 was a great accomplishment this year. And I believe they start already talking about 12 grand next year, so we'll have to see what happens. David, anything you'd like to say?
Absolutely. Well, first off, couldn't be more blessed by the work of all of our administrators for the school district, the teachers, the students, the school board's blessing for this. I mean, we're just incredibly grateful for all the outpouring of support for our YMCA here in Springbrough. And your support of our YMCA is tremendous. And I can't think in my 32-year career working for the Y, I started when I was really young, of a school district that has partnered so well with our YMCA. At every turn, this district is just professional, courteous. I mean, I can't think of enough superlatives to tell you how wonderful this district is. So, on behalf of the Y and the more than 3,000 people that will be blessed by this, I want to say thank you for all of your efforts. I know it takes a lot of work, but you have a very grateful organization that is thankful for all your efforts. So, appreciate it.
Thanks for being here so long. Nice of you.
All right, move to item 2.2, the Springbrough Education Association reports. Don't believe I see anybody. Item 2.3, the Springbrough Classified Employees Association reports. Also nobody. There's no public participation pre-arranged. And nobody here for public participation. All right then, I guess we will move into work session. Ms. Cook?
Yep, our first presentation is 3.2, 2019-20 Student Handbook. Ms. Cook?
Mr. President, members of the board, tonight I have for you handbooks for all six schools for next school year. These go in a book with a calendar that gets handed out to all children within each of the schools.
Questions?
I just would like to say, I appreciate the consistency among the handbooks. When you had kids at multiple schools, it was just nice seeing and flipping through the variety of them, just seeing, you know, of course, there's going to be some tweaks among the buildings, but there was just a lot of consistency. So, if you need something and one kid doesn't have it at home, the other handbook has it. So, I appreciate that. It was really nice to look through them.
Thanks. Our principals will report on that.
Thank you.
Their reports we have done this month. And for something that has come to us, Tara Floyd, in her great architectural experience.
Sorry, I didn't look over. I tried my best to use at least the ruler so the line's straight.
Pretty well done for a finding person.
I tried to at least make the line straight. Okay, so, we wanted to talk in tonight, and I'm sure Dan will have to chime in a little bit if it gets scary, but we have kind of run out a little bit of space in the board office. And we've tried to be very creative of how to create enough space and make the current space that we have make sense. So, we kind of have two options to look at as we are growing the building. One is, we do have an option to go over to EduCare and rent a half of the floor of EduCare. We heard back from them with a quote of $8,493 a year, plus 78 cents a square foot, which there is 2,831 square feet that are available, is what you told me.
That is the third floor of the EduCare building. On the west side, offices and lots of windows. And we cannot move walls. We cannot take down any premier health signs. We can just put furniture in and they would have to use the shell as is.
So, that would be a total of $10,701 per year for us to rent that. And they made it very clear that it's just temporary. So, what we would be doing is trying to consistently look for somebody else to rent that space. That would be going to pay a lot more. So, what would happen is we could pay the $10,701 per year, and then if at any time they decide they need that space back, then we would be forced to do what our second option would be, which would be to make renovations to our current office to be able to accommodate everybody. So, even though it's an option, I don't necessarily think that it makes a lot of sense because at some point, we could still have to do renovations at the board office anyway. And we don't have that voting until September 30th is when the last that people will be made off by a career on that building. So, that could potentially be over $117,000 in rent if we ended up renting that space with the same dollar difference today and the same utility cost today. It would still be $117,000.
How that conversation started there was a great conversation with the leadership for their help, who was going to give us the whole third floor. That third floor had said empty for seven years. All of a sudden, in the middle of this process, there is a doctor's office coming up there and is going to take half of it. Can't believe the timing. And so, that's how it then came over that we were only going to have half. And we can't even get that waiting room because there'll be secondations in that waiting room. So, we came up with a second option.
So, the second option is for us to make renovations to our current board office. So, what I've tried to do on this sheet for everybody is, I've kind of, I mean, I've put names of people in offices that might not necessarily be in those offices per se. Some of them are already figured out, but some of them, there's going to be people moving around. So, as an example, when you're looking at upstairs on the left side, it hasn't been decided yet, at least I haven't been told where all of the curriculum staff is going to be. But currently, we have special ed and HR upstairs. So, we would be moving them downstairs and the main curriculum upstairs. And again, they might not be in these exact offices, but these are the current offices that are already here.
Let me, so this is where these people currently sit, or these are where they will be moving?
This is where they, if everything, if all the changes are approved, then this is where they would be going. But like I said, I haven't talked to Andrea or Chuck or Cheryl to know which office they're going to want. So, I always kind of place them in.
Yeah, it's pretty close.
Okay.
Okay. I just wanted to make sure I understood that. Okay.
So, one of our challenges right now is conference room space. We do not have hardly any conference room space. We have the main conference area, and then if we can squeeze people into some of the offices, I think Harry might have a room or two. I think one might have a room or two. I think I have a room for four. I know that Dan has a few more here. So, we just can't have any big meetings. And in fact, those rooms are utilized a lot for curriculum, for gifted meetings. And so, then we have all of our committee meetings too that have to buy for that same space. So, conference room space is needed. So, what we thought on the first floor, the only change on the first floor that we proposed is if we look back where it shows Dan, it's at the very back of the table where it shows Dan's office. Currently, we're actually sitting, there is this open hallway that kind of just goes across and then it comes into the coffee room. They are able to close that room off and make an office for $6,950. And so, that would create an office for Scott to be there. And then that would open up Scott's office to be a small conference room that curriculum could utilize. That's their conference room. So, then they, I mean, obviously, if they have a really big meeting, they would still probably use the main conference room, but that would help. Because right now, downstairs in the basement, they have an open space where they are able to hold like the curriculum meetings and a lot of other meetings and has people coming into the district. So, that would give them an area to have some conference room space. So, that total would be $6,950. Then on the second page, the basement is where we're trying to do the majority of the renovations. So, currently down where, on the side now where the curriculum is, they have these three open cubicles. And so, we know, just even when I go down there, if anybody's having any conversations or something, they can all hear each other. It's very hard going to have like private or conversations with vendors or whoever. So, it only makes sense really to make those offices regardless of who's down there. What we're proposing is to put special ed and HR and operations downstairs because they have the most foot traffic. And that way, there's not people coming in so much into the main front door. You have maidens, people who are coming in, and all the people getting their fingerprinting and bagging and, you know, all of those different things. So, this would eliminate some of that because then we'd be able to park around back and come in to the back door, which does have the camera and a little bit as well. So, what we're proposing is putting three offices instead of the two cubicles in the open space that's down there on the right side of the page where it says Kathleen, Emily, and Harry. Again, I just put third names in here. I'm not sure who's going to be where. But those would be three offices that would be created. Then we have, we do have a very large registration area that does, that could be utilized to help the space if we don't need it to be quite so large. So, we're proposing to dim it to that current kitchen and a break room area that's not utilized. We want to use that, plus the registration area, split it in half and have half be for the HR people to have all of their people coming in for bagging and doing their new hire paperwork and giving their fingerprints. And then the other space would be for registration. So, that space and then the three offices, and then also if you can see a small little dotted line that I, I wrote new doorway, where it says 30 by 6 towards the front of the page, there's a new doorway that will be added right there. And then that way, when we're doing the main kindergarten and preschool registration, there'll still be a pass room so they can actually go in through registration and out because we usually have a line quite long. So, if they had to go out the same door they came in, it might, with that space being smaller, it might have just been difficult to get everybody in and out of the same door. So, by putting that doorway there. So, that total would be under $19,000 to do the registration area and the HR area, and $24,675 for the three new offices. So, the total cost of the project would be just under $50,000 if we complete all of these renovations. But this would give everybody an office and would give us additional conference space. And we can also use, if needed, that room way to the left of the page that's 19 by 10 that's being utilized by tech right now. Let's do some shelving. That could potentially even, it's already ready. It could be a conference room if we ever needed another conference area.
The strength of this is utilizing the space that we have for, you know, a smaller amount of money. You know, premier health, if we go up there, we didn't think any doctors would be coming there before. And now they've come. So, now if that's successful and then you have another small doctor's office once moved there, they can give us six to nine months to move out. I think nine months they could've given us. But now you've spent two years times 10, 11, 12,000 dollars, and we still have to do this. It's a good physically sound decision, and we've got everyone still in one building, plus we have the conference, the conference areas.
We've had several meetings. We've had several meetings trying to figure out what the best options were, who can go where. And, I mean, we really have thought this through a lot before we even, you know, decided to break the floor. And it has been discussed a lot. This seemed to be the one that made the most sense and kind of kept everybody together with your team and not having to split teams up.
Yeah, and having to split the teams up. And it does seem like, yeah, it's a little more upfront cost, but obviously, in a couple of years, you've spent less than what you would if you had to stay. And you've gotten more certainty because it sounds like there's some uncertainty in the EduCare side too, so.
And certainly, people loved, the third floor looked, some of the views that they were going to have out there. But these offices are actually more doable. Many of the offices up to the third floor has a sink in it because it was a doctor's office, an examination room. We could have pulled that out. Could have gotten things in there, but this is for business.
Some of them are very long, but skinny. So, it would have been interesting with like a sink. And then like, and everything is white. The walls are like white concrete, the floors are like white tiles. And everything is completely white in the whole place. But, I mean, it would have looked really clean, minus the flies.
Sterile.
Yeah, very sterile. But, I mean, it was a good option, but it would have probably also cost a lot to price and find furniture that would fit because the best stuff that they have currently would have never fit in any of those rooms. So, with this, there'll be minimal, you know, we'll just have to buy a few new desks and then.
So, to break that tonight, or, and we've got a time crunch here. Our thought is that we want to make sure we have three quotes. And so, we wanted, our next board meeting's scheduled for 27. We were going to kind of pull you tonight to see if we could have a board meeting next week for the main purpose to approve this. And then there may be some AHR links or maybe some CFO links on that agenda. But to wait two weeks, push back the construction a little bit further, we wouldn't be in this done until maybe the second week of August.
And I can tell you why that's a little risky, because I talked about that. So, the main part of the construction is going to be six weeks down in that area where the HR and registration is going to go. And so, after July 4th, that's when we have a huge rush between July 4th and the beginning of the school is when most people decide to come register for kids for next year who are leaving into the district or they're having a, you know, whatever, for moving or I don't even know what other reasons why they're coming in. But just, that's where our biggest influx is. We usually even have to have a sub or sometimes even two come down in help because there's so many people enrolling. So, if this is going to start, if we get this approved at the 27th meeting, which is our other one that is already on the books, then they wouldn't be able to start the project until July 1st. So, they'll lose a day on the 4th of July because people aren't working. So, they'll only have a few days that week. Then what pushes back in the second, so then they said they wouldn't be done with the project until August 9th if they don't start till the 1st. And the only, so what I'm going to have to probably do, as long as I can work it out curriculum, is to borrow a few of the offices for some of the people who might not be in until July and borrow those offices to do the registration in there while there's construction going on. Well, the only problem with that is there's also going to be construction going on with those three offices that they're building. So, we need to get those offices built first. And they said that'll take about a week. And then that way, we can utilize some of those rooms to do that piece while the registration's going on. So, there is a logistic issue with where are all these registrations going to happen and all the new people coming in getting fingerprinted that we're hiring over the summer. So, that's our only biggest issue with the time crunch of how we're going to get this done.
Do you think you would see that if you started?
Yeah, they said that we could get it approved, say, the 20th. So, we had one being on the 20th or something like that to approve this. And they can start and they'll have between the 21st and the end of this month to get done with the three offices. They don't, they don't want to take seven days to get the three offices in the basement done. And then that way, they can, at the same time that they're going to be starting, they're going to have another crew doing the, starting on the registration area. So, that would give a good two weeks. So, then that means they're only utilizing those offices in curriculum for a couple of weeks before they come finishing the whole project. So, impossible to approve that a little sooner would just help the timeline. But again, we know that we need to get two other quotes. I think Jim got this quote because he said that from his experience, they've been noticeably cheaper than everybody else. And he believes this will be the cheapest, but he knows that he still needs to get two other ones just to make sure that is the case. And that, so he's going to be doing that next week.
So, I've got a couple of questions. With the, and it might already be like this, do we have security in the basement like we do upstairs that it's the buzz-in system?
Yes. There's one outside the, it's outside the registration door right now. And it's on the registration desk. So, they can see it buzzing people in right now.
So, we run just the same.
I'm not sure what's over by you. Is there one over by you in that?
Just my registration.
No, we don't have a buzzer. We just have a swipe card. Swipe card. So, for what the public is doing though, it would be the same system because more people, I mean, like, there'd be more people coming in down there since you're doing IDs and stuff, right?
Yes. So, HR, HR will be, you can come in and where you go in now for registration, you can come into HR and you can go straight for registration. So, the break there on the outside of that door for both offices is one of those, what we call it, the screen and you can buzz them in. They can't get in unless they're buzzed in.
Okay, good. Okay. So, do we have a backup if they were to get caught up and like for registration, since we do have that influx of students coming in? Do we have a backup plan for what will, you're laughing.
The backup plan as far as many offices of the people who are gone in the summer, so we might have to redirect them. There are some people who are off a good portion of July because that's where the only time they can take off.
Right.
So, we can, as long as they're okay with it, we can utilize a few of those offices to just direct people to go here. You have to look out there this time.
As well as the board conference room, we could maybe.
We can set up something.
Yeah, I could set up something.
We don't have any meetings in there during the summer either. But we have thought that you could work around whatever's not listed. And they do still have to make appointments. So, we can also work around that. We can block off times that they don't just walk in. They have to set those 15 minute appointments. So, we could block off days that we, that people were going to be working and they couldn't, didn't have space for them. We could block that time off.
Okay, two more things. You mentioned there won't be a lot of cost for the new furniture and things like that. Is there an estimation of what that cost might be?
No, Jim was, Jim's going to be working on that. I think we just now kind of hammered out exactly where everything was going to go a few days ago. So, now what he's going to have to do is look at our current furniture that we have and which offices will fit, that furniture will fit in. And then we'll only have to buy new for, if it's a brand new office that nobody has the furniture for yet. And the offices that we can, we have a few pieces of furniture we might be able to use as well that could be part of the eight years.
Should be very limited because we're only adding a couple of offices and none of the offices are so small that the car furniture will work.
Well, and it just depends on where the windows are and where the doors are. So, hopefully, it'll be minimal, but he's going to have to logistically work through that once he determines where everybody's going to go and what all the oil and alls are. I mean, he has pretty well where everybody's going to be. He just now needs to go measure everybody's current furniture and see what fits more. So, we'll know that better too when we.
Like next week?
If I get the other two quotes more, whether all that moves up to, hopefully, it'll be very minimal though.
Okay. So, if, I guess I didn't realize when the new positions were being brought on that it would also require, like, we didn't have current space for them. So, could you bring next week, when we meet, could you bring what, like, when we were voting on that, there was a lot of conversation around, this isn't actually costing the district because there's a lot of savings that are had through re- matrician and things like that. Can you bring what the actual total is to the district, the difference is, once we add in, once we do? I think this is a good plan in making the changes with what we have. I just would like to see, once we make these changes and add in the office furniture, what that difference is.
Yeah, I do have, I've been trying to keep that updated as we make decisions. As of.
And as she looks that up, when this all happened, the plan was supposed to go to premier health. At that point, seven years of no, of no doctors coming in, what they were going to do was hand it to us rent free. We were going to get the third floor rent free and pick up, we were supposed to pick up the taxes utilities. Well, I just go ahead and have it the whole third floor. It would have been that tax exempt. It was an education building. So, we'd have had a couple thousand dollars in utilities every year. And so, that was the plan. At no point did we ever think after seven years, doctor's offices were going to become. And so, yeah, we've had a little change here.
It looks like right now we're about $65,000 in savings. A big portion of that was when Kerry took those two positions and made them down into law and after that, I think he was made. So, that was a big chunk to the savings. I guess we did have to hire a couple additional aid positions and aid, these are ISs.
So, this would be $65,000 once.
It's going to be close to a wash because this is 65. It's what this is about 50.
Oh, so then we would still take the cost of this out of the 65?
Yeah.
Gotcha.
Any other discussion, questions?
So, I would ask, next Thursday night, June 20th, would that work for the four of you? If we need to do this and a couple other items, I don't feel very satisfied.
Oh, yeah, I do, but I'll be on vacation.
You're on vacation then? Are you like all week?
Yeah.
Okay.
I will be available. I'll be, yeah, Thursday.
That would be a no.
Is there any night, is there any night next week that we get the three of you since one is going all week? Because I think Dave's back in town.
I can.
I would prefer not to since that's my impression.
I'm working the customer.
You can do without me.
But you have.
Figure it out with Dave. Sorry, I'm traveling as well.
Well.
I mean, we can't, I mean, if it can't happen, we're figuring it out. We're just trying to make it easier.
I'll have to get a quick one Saturday morning for a quick meeting.
I don't know. I don't know if Jim will be able to get two other quotes.
No, no, 22nd.
On the 22nd?
Could we do an early morning?
That's what she said.
Early morning, the 22nd.
The current. Or just fitting it in.
For accounting group. I think three years out. Great question. A Saturday morning for a quick meeting. I don't know, would all be used sports begin? If we did 8:00 AM, 9:00 AM, 6:00 AM?
Yeah, I could do Saturday morning.
8:00, 8:30, Saturday, 9 o'clock? 9:00, 22nd.
Well, Ash, can I send it to you?
I'll self-check.
I'll have, I'll have Sydney do a story there and then you know.
Is she the one who sent that? Did you see the information?
And your manager, right?
She'll. She'll send it to you.
I'll do that.
All right, you're sure.
All right, you're next.
All right, ahead of 3.5.
Yes. I don't know if you guys have had a chance to look over the information that I sent to you the other day regarding the employee benefits consultant that we were looking to paper on. I went through a long process, several weeks long, of looking at different insurance.
I went through a long process, several weeks long, of looking at different insurance companies, insurance brokers that would be able to help us with going out to market and really looking at our insurance benefits and what we can do for our staff and the district in terms of, you know, different options that we have going forward for our insurance. And we're kind of, and then again, in the time crunch, because we have this assumption first in order to determine whether we're going to stay with the ETC or if we're going to go to a different option. And even if we stay with the ETC, we have to, we have to know by then what we're going to do in terms of changing plan options. If we're going to go with a different plan option than ETC. So in hiring an employee benefits consultant slash broker, they will go out to market. They will look at all of the options that we have and will break back, not only feedback, but different packages that we can look at. If we're going to fit in and determine one of those will work for us. And we're trying to mitigate obviously the 22% increase that we're going to receive starting June 1. So I think that this will be a very beneficial thing for not only us as an administration, but it will be helpful for our employees because they have so many tools and resources that they'll be able to educate our employees on how to utilize their insurance and different things that we can do, you know, as employees to help ourselves and help the district at the same time watch forward to their benefits. So I provided all the information on the three companies that I was going to ask tonight. The one that I selected was Megoan and Braybender. We've had a relationship with them for many years. They used to guard dental and vision. We just recently moved it all over to the ETC, just because it was the easier way for us to have everything together under one umbrella. But they've never worked with us, at least that I've been able to find out, in an actual worker type situation. But they have always been great to work with. So just the amount of information that they provided and the depth that they have to offer us in terms of, just the analysis, the analytics that they have, was amazing. And I did take a tour of the facility and I kind of met with everybody there and just to kind of look at what different things they had to offer us. So I also think another benefit will be that they have an in-house attorney within Megoan that all they do is work with health insurance laws and negotiating agreements out of written. And just depending on how all of the process goes, that might be helpful for us to know to utilize some of those services. And it's harder to cross, so it doesn't cost them additional. That might just be another lens to look through as we go forward in the term of what we're going to build. So I didn't know if anyone had any questions, if they had a chance to look through the different offerings.
You threw it very, very thorough on what they had to offer and I trust your leadership with that and it's very impressive.
I have one, so in their response back, question 10, they talk about ensuring customer satisfaction. They put 25% of their fees at risk. What's, do they have any more detail as to what, what satisfaction?
She did call me today, she, because what I did was, so she gives the original quote of 75, I just thought that's just too much. I just feel like, as much as I can see what depth you have to offer, I just don't feel, I feel like that's such a scary. So they did come back and, you know, they let me know that we're the only district now that they have to ask for pricing. Everybody kept saying that, but they just were excited about the opportunity. I did ask them that if we weren't satisfied, for some reason that they didn't meet expectation, would they still honor the 15% off, or the 25% off the last quarter with their new quote of $60,000 of payment? She said yes. She said she wanted to clarify, wanted to know what we expected. She said, once we determine what our expectations are, then they will meet those expectations. She said that the difficulty right now is the first year will be impossible for them to give us a financial guarantee, only because they haven't gone out to market with us, we haven't been utilizing them yet. So it'll be more of a service for the first year, it'll be a service guarantee that did we meet and exceed the requirements that we had asked for them service-wise? And then once they had a backdrop of the financial side, we ended up going kind of saying, figure out how to make sure we don't get anything higher than a 5% increase next year. And then their job is to then go, you know, what do we want to save X dollars? That would be something down the road, but since they haven't gone out to market yet, they only have a couple of years' plans native to look out for ETC and that they don't have enough information to kind of make a guarantee on the financial. But, but they're the only ones that even gave, gave a discount if we weren't satisfied. So I think that if we weren't, if they didn't meet expectations for some reason, that we definitely, you know, talk about. Because right now it is a service. And they did say first year it would just be a service guarantee. They didn't need the level of service that we required, which we will establish what that looks like on the board.
I think it's one of those things where, you know, it's not, if you look at our entire insurance spend, which were our benefits, roughly, I don't know, which one's spot? Five million. It's a small expense to better manage that five million and try to keep that cost in line. So, you know, I think it's one of those things that'll like pay for itself ultimately.
That's, that's my point.
Right, and it sounds like in a few years we'll all have to a dollar.
They're going to be hard pressed to do worse, I think, than we're getting right now. Far as, you know, at the same time, I think they should be able to significantly chip away at what we're seeing right now. That would be my expectation.
Does that include, do we think we'll have the opportunity in its late game, that we still think we'll be able to pull a really self-insured option?
Yes.
Yeah, they mentioned it.
There was some information in some of the, this thing, see, I have it like this, because they presented it to me during the meeting, but you guys have the slideshow version, but yeah, some of the analytics, they can be more self-funded, but it was scary at first, but without them going to market. This was just their internal analysis, once they go to market, they said, we're very attracted to certain, you know. They also said there's some new thing, and they said what it was called, I can probably find it in here. But there is some sort of partially funded, like partially self-funded and partially fully funded option that has came out as a lead that we could potentially do something like that before we take the whole jump to be, be self-funded. That was something to look forward. So there are so many options, and once they go to market, we'll know.
Yeah, I just was trying, I knew they could do that, I just didn't know on the timing.
Yes, they did say. They actually have a timeline that they've provided us as well. So they said they can accomplish anything that we would like.
This will give it enough.
And you guys are.
They were self-funded back in the late 90s.
It's very good, you say?
Just because you have, you have a huge casualty.
That's what the stock loss is for. Stock loss insurance, we can buy stock loss insurance, that will say anything, any planes that are over a certain dollar can pick up by that stock loss. So we can maybe some of those. So there's some things that.
Insurance change.
Yeah. Yeah, and that was the key, to have some of those things in place if you were to live in a house like that. Because that's, you know, just one plane, you're done. So yeah, I understand that for sure.
Do you want to move on to a work session? President, I do first report in front of the treasurer. I want to recognize another member of that Kaufman YMCA team who is down here, Jessica Jones with the sunglasses on her head. The reason that I'm calling her out in front of all of her peers is the fact that Clear Creek kicked all five other buildings and was the number one money-producing building for Kaufman YMCA. Congratulations, Jessica, and your team.
Thank you.
They have shamed the older brains especially and into performing more next year. So we move on to the treasurer.
Awesome. So May 2019 financials are actually looking very good. I was surprised at how well we're doing right now in terms of, we're tightening up. So once we did the May forecast, we really have talked with everyone internally and basically said, if you don't need something this year, please not buy it. Let's try to tighten up, especially with something over which is in the cattle area that we were looking at before that we know are coming. We've also really looked into some of our grant funds and we're utilizing our grant funds to, to move some of the benefits expenses and salary expenses that we are currently charging to the general fund to utilize some of those grant funds for that, for that purpose. So I was able to move in the month of May, you will be able to see that our health insurance, our benefits section was about $50,000 lower than normal. And that's because I moved some expenses from the general fund into the grant funds that we're able to utilize for those, for that purpose, as well as some of the payroll expenses as well. So we're under budget with payroll and benefits through May. And in pretty much every other category, we're still a little bit up on the capital needs and capital area, we're still just a little high there. But overall, at the end of May, we're about $420,000 under what we anticipated to be. So if, and so when I look at June and some of the things that I know are coming in June that we didn't have obviously in May, we're probably end of the year about $300,000 under budget from wherever we lose this day to May. And our revenue is increasing just a little bit more right now. It's pretty much dead on, but we're about $23,000 over for the anticipated in receiving from our catastrophic costs that we just, we just learned that we're getting $341,000 this year in reimbursements over 3200 last year. So it's $23,000 increase there. So we're a little bit, going to look a little more positive with revenue and we're going to look, look at more positive towards the treasury. We're going to have as much expenses. So that will be nice to, to raise our cash balance a little bit. So everything else looks good.
Yeah, I guess these are all part of.
So for 4.2 and 4.3, I know that I sent an email to you guys and Michelle did back out. She had a change of heart, probably Kyle talked to her, talked her out of it somehow. But, you know, Michelle, she just said that she really loves being over there and that she, after she accepted the job, the more she thought about it, the more she just feels like, I can't wait.
But she didn't, did?
So she backed down. She, she decided that she really loves where she is and so, that, I mean, and we were, we were really bummed. But I will say, I was very pleased because another person that had applied, Andrea Stevens, she interviewed excellently. And I actually received an email from, let's see, who was it that sent me the email? Mike Myers, Rob Berger and Jimmy Anker. Sent me an email and they said, I heard she was, applied for this as well. She interviewed for the media specialist position and they said, I just want to say she was awesome, she knows her stuff. And so I went ahead and interviewed her and she, we're all team away. I had Kideri there and a few of my staff members there. And she knows, she was a secretary for a school in Virginia for four years. And she did the entire registration process along with a lot of other duties. And she knew the entire process and it mimicked exactly what we do here. So there was, there's not much difference in what they do in Virginia versus here. So I'm very excited about her starting. So I do have her on here for approvals, got two on the exempt salary schedule. And then also to, she has a vacation coming up at the end of June, so she will only be able to work five days in the month of June. So I am asking for approval on that for five days to kind of get her in here a little bit earlier and train her. I don't think it's going to take a year that much for her to get to speed, so. That was 4.3. Then 4.4, we have approval of a donation of $400 from Glenn Owen for the Erica Owen Scholarship Fund. Then also approval of a donation of various music supplies, since it's from Virginia High Choir and Chalk Choir valued at $769 from Christina Wiley. Approval of the Dumber Shoes Project of $433.98 for a furniture activity learning chair stool. That will be used by Nicole Brown's third grade class. And then, I'm confident if I'm saying it wrong, but approval of a donation of $25 for Daniel and Natalie Bacia. And a $25 donation for Harry and Susan Moore to the special lyrics at Dennis in honor of Don and Jean Tetwita. And then also I do have on here approval of the MOU with the South Platteau Call. That's our, who does our sub calls. I did go through the MOU and it looks the same as it did last year, so there's no changes there. It's just we have to approve one each year. Also, approval of the Slogan Schedule of Software Services for item 20. They are identical as well, they haven't changed since last year, so there's no additional costs. And then I have 4.10, approval of the Megoan and Braybender as an employee benefits consultant, I talked to you guys in a little bit before. And then actually 4.11 will be items 4.1 through 4.10.
Okay, a lot of stuff there. Now, it's funny, is there a motion to approve, essentially it's 4.1 through 4.10? Discussion?
That's a, that'll be, it's just a win-win, kind of a good person. Michelle's a great asset, or she is. That's good.
Anderson?
Yes.
Bab, DeSloge?
Yes, yes.
Approval donation of $346.56 from Jeanne Coraje in East of Act to be split equally between the libraries that was recorded through these two schools and to use for most of the library's device.
There.
Yeah, it's, though, it's the majority votes president voting.
It's not the majority of them.
Both president voted, got, I got.
So, yeah, so there are motion to approve item 4.1, 2. Seven. Seven.
So Anderson? James Anderson? Bab?
Of state.
Bab?
Of state. Yes.
Does Superintendent Report, under, under the Superintendent's report, there are six items, all administrative contracts. We are blessed that our administrators are choosing to stay at Springboro Schools. We had one that was able to seek out and get a principal position at Middletown Schools. We approved that resignation, I believe, at the last board meeting. But we have six quality administrators here, all building level administrators, that we are asking for your approval for their administrative contracts.
Okay, so I have 5.7 is the approval of those items 5.1 through 5.6. Is there a motion? Second, discussion.
Anderson?
Yes.
Bab? DeSloge?
Yes.
Yes.
Under the Human Resources Report, Carrie Wester is gone today and she is, she is on a vacation. So I'm going to take care of the personnel report. We're still going to break them out tonight. The first one is the non-athletic items. You will see eight different pages here. And just briefly, you know, you've got the resignations, disability, retirement for the first five. We're employing several certified personnel, then approving some one-year certified contracts. Most, if not all, of those people are coming back for their second year, that's why for a one-year contract. We're going to adjust certified and classified personnel hours. We've got some summer school contracts here, some routes, extended days, and certified substitutes. There are many certified substitutes on this list because those, those people will fill it in different areas. We just don't know where, so we saved various, so they can fill that either as a custodian or a bus driver or facilities in some, some way. And then at the end, five people who are going on leave of absences. What we would like to do as your president is approve that one by itself.
Okay, so is there a motion to approve item 6.1? Seven.
Second.
Discussion. Yes.
Bab?
Yes.
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 Next two items, we will vote for together. The first one is a four-page athletic report. These are all supplemental personnel from head coaches to assistant coaches. And then athletic temporary help where those people help out taking tickets and so forth. The other one is the camp of worker report that is consistent with other reports that we have brought to the board in the past. This one is spread laid boys basketballs, a fundamental camp.
Okay, is there a motion to approve item 6.4, which is the approval of 6.2 and 6.3? Second, discussion.
Yes. Bab?
Yes.
Yes.
At this point, we'll turn it over to our current Director of Construction, Andrea Book.
Good evening again. Here we have student handbooks. If there are any questions about the student handbooks, I would be happy to answer those.
Is there a motion to approve item 7.1, approval of the handbooks?
Salute.
Second, discussion, or questions, please, book.
Anderson?
Yes.
Bab? DeSloge?
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you for your support.
Bring up our Director of Special Education, Emily Gill.
Good evening, members of the floor, and for the president. I have two things seeking approval today for student services and private placement contracts. Those are not new ones, so just a renewal for this upcoming school year. And then also 8.2 is approval of the 1920 Summer Services for the Warren County Educational Service.
Is there a motion to approve item 8.3, which is the approval of 8.1, 8.2? Discussion.
I have my same question that I ask every single year. I know what's coming. Are we continuing to try to bring some of this in-house so that we're not paying out this exorbitant amount?
So part of, part of the reason why you see an increase this year is because we actually are, we moved some of our nursing services to Warren County ESC to save some costs. We were using another outside agency, we moved some services there. The increase, however, is because we ended up having to add services for other students that were new. So nursing was an increase because of new services, not because of the cost of the services. As far as the related services goes, that is something that Tara and I continue to look at, and still, it ends up being more cost-effective. And it's, the reasoning behind that is because we have over six buildings, and they can provide part-time people for us, where we wouldn't be able to, we'd have to, we'd have to hire more staff. It would cost us more in the long run, because we would have to hire more staff to cover the needs that we have.
Even if they're hiring at level zero?
Yes. And I, I mean, is that?
There are areas we don't hire at level zero when it comes to, like, school psychiatrists. You know, we're gonna hire them at a lot higher, because you can't find anyone that's zero. But I also do want to say, thanks to the communication and leadership of Tara Floyd looking through this and talking to Emily, they will do tweaks. Last year, we spent more than 10 units for the alternative school. We've been able to tweak that down to none. Now, that's not a lot, but it's a tweak. Each year, we continue to look at that, and again, Emily is doing a bang-up job leading her division, works very closely with Tara on all these financial matters. Again, there's some increases, but they're trying best they can. We appreciate the questions.
Emily's done a good job, too. She's applied, second year in a row, that she's applied for a grant that we will hopefully get as well, in the transition point there. So even though it's listed on there, that would be thanks to her efforts and her case fees applying for those grants. And she's constantly looking for different funding that we can use to mitigate these challenges a lot. And she does a great job with that. But it is, right now, we do look at it each year, and it is not cost-effective right now. The nice thing about the ESC is they have a big pool of people, so they can say, if we have several kids who need a certain amount of minutes and stuff, so they'll provide us with several people who would only charge us one up to even, it might be four or five teachers, because they give us like a .2 and a .15, just to say, maybe two hours of hearing, an hour of hearing. And so we wouldn't be able to spread our people, we'd have to give them time to move between buildings, and we would have to hire more just to do what they're doing for us.
Right. And that in itself is, is what I was essentially trying to say.
So with, and I don't know if this is for you or for Kyle, but for the resource coordinator, those three positions, is that something we get to continue to have three of?
Yes.
Like indefinitely, or?
Well.
I think it's a wonderful thing. I just know that we have more than a lot of other schools, so I'm hoping that we get to continue that?
Yes. Wendy Ford works closely with the ESC, and she, she leads that effort, because we put those three in different buildings, and we are getting that for another year. We actually are hoping to do more in the future, but for now, we want to keep three, and the ESC continues to help subsidize that.
Okay. Great. Great. Thank you. I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Yep.
Anderson?
Yes.
Bab?
Yes.
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 All right, we'll move into 901. Board member comments, announcements, future considerations. Sab?
I had a question, and that was based off of our meeting Monday night, and this might be for the future, but previously in another meeting, you had mentioned, somebody had mentioned, that we had done a study with Decision Insight on the.
Enrollment?
In the enrollment. Where are we at with that? Is that something that's gonna come forth in one of our future meetings, or?
That's part of the facility, facilities assessment. That's part of what they use, they did ask for that information that we have for Decision Insight. It is an ongoing relationship with them, and it was a multi-year, I think, that John had done, like he was here. So they'll be able to provide us with additional information to us and inform, but they're using that data right now.
Great.
To build into their facilities of what, who they believe we're gonna have where and when.
Great. Okay. Just hit me Monday night that we had been talking about that, and at some point we'd hear about that, so I was hopeful that that was being taken into consideration.
Well, and let me ask some more. Did you see that first report that John had done with that? I will email that.
Yeah, no, because it was, that's what you had said, that we had got the report, and it was gonna be sent, like, it was gonna be presented to us, and we never, that wasn't the fault.
That first report, you said, about that agreement, that HPE, ECU, likes, and this stuff, but it's a separate report, I'll get it sent, too.
That would be great. Second thing was, there wasn't really a vote on this tonight, but I just would like to state, as I did in email, I'm very disappointed in our decision with the media specialists and replacing it with an educational aide. Nothing, but I don't know the person that we're hiring. I really hope that we will reconsider this in the future. I think for our students, that we need to prepare them in such a way for the future, that we need to have a qualified media specialist in this position, especially at the high school level. Multiple schools, as I stated in the emails, have media specialists and not an educational aide. So I hope that in the future, this will be reconsidered. This is just not a place that I feel like we should be saving money. We should be looking at a different type of qualification just because the state's not requiring, and I think that's why the multiple schools are using media specialists and not educational aides. The last thing is, having David Thompson here tonight just reminded me about all of the connections that we have in the community, and I think it's a wonderful thing, like he said, the relationship the school has with the Y, and I think it's something that I hope that we continue to look for different ways, whether it's through our teams working out there, or the swimming that we do with the special needs. I think it's a really cool thing that not all districts have with the community organizations. So it was neat to see him share that and to note that it's different than they have with other Ys in communities, schools. So kudos to the district with those relationships that we built with them. So it's just neat to see. So that's it. Thanks.
Yeah, I would hope, well, I remember even back when my son was here back in the 90s, recently, I mean, he was a disability, he's only, he went down 11, and so I think we have a lot of history doing this, so I think we would. Other than that, I don't know.
You know, first of all, I, you know, again, I would second the relationship with the Y. You know, I think it is a special relationship, and again, I'm glad that we continue to support them, and, you know, they enter and support us. I think those types of relationships in the community, you know, are extremely beneficial to our students, so I'm glad to see that. You know, a quick thanks to all our generous donations, including my fellow board members. I'll get a plaque or something for you guys up in the library.
I want a pillar painted.
Just paint over one of the faces, I'm sure.
Just give her that growl, oh, there.
There, yeah.
That works, too.
You know, congratulations to our administrators. I'm glad we're able to put your contracts, and I'm glad each and every one of you is here. Again, it goes without saying, you guys do an amazing job. You know, I cannot imagine, you know, stress you guys go through each year. I'm like, well, I know for Clear Creek, because my son was there. But, you know, in all seriousness, again, thank you for sticking with Springboro. We love having you, and it's a privilege to get to vote on that. And I was glad to hear that people are taking vacations, I really, that people are taking vacations for their mental health, and they come back in August, ready to come. So again, I hope everybody's enjoying their summer.
Yeah, I would echo what Mr. Good said. Congratulations to our administrators. We really appreciate having you here, and looking forward to another great year. And thank you, I guess, to everybody that came out on Monday evening for those two sessions. Definitely, it was a good start, good kickoff to, to those task forces around our facilities and our finances. And so anybody that wasn't able to attend or watching on video, you know, there's opportunities to still participate in those, but it was really appreciated, the folks that did turn out, and I thought it was a productive start. So thank you to everybody that's been involved with that. That's all I had.
Got two items tonight, Mr. President. Yes. If it's not posted, we'll be, the video of those two sessions are gonna be put online, yes.
Along with information about if people want to sign up?
Yes. So just two quick things. Last Friday, Kyle Martin and many staff members, many parents, and I drove up to Akron to watch our boys' high school baseball team participate for the first time in our school's history, the Division One State Semi-Final Baseball Game. It was a hard-fought game, but we were up against the lefty, threw a two-hitter, shut out against us, and lost 4-0. That team then went on to the finals and lost 4-2 in extra innings, standing nations, so we would have won the finals. But it was, it was a great day. We traveled, you know, under four hours. Had some people had to stay tonight, the boys had to stay tonight. Then Tor had to travel a little bit more than 30 minutes, and we had more fans there than they did. So great support here with this school. I do want to announce to the board, you've heard about this a little bit in the past, but we have kicked this off. Scott either has sent it out, or it will be sent out in the next few days, but we have a link now to the website, to the New Achievement Hall of Fame. Here at Springboro Schools, we have an athletic hall of fame that has a great history here. The plaques, the faces are in the hall, including Dave Stotfus. We have an achievement, or an academic hall of fame that's out there in this rotunda for students who are the National American Scholars. But we are starting an achievement hall of fame for students, graduates that graduated for more than 10 years, and criteria like they have been successful in science and engineering, business, military, fine arts, education, politics, and so forth. We have a committee that will review the applications. The applications are gonna be due, excuse me, I just lost that site. The applications are out there now, they can get them online on the tab on our website, or they can get paper copies at the board office. All nominations are gonna be due August 23rd. The committee will select the winners. The first year, we will have up to 10, and then after that, up to five each year. On October 11th, it will be Hall of Fame night at our home football game, where we will introduce all of the winners and their families. And then the very next night, more of an intimate setting at Heatherwood for a nice formal introduction ceremony and dinner. We're very excited to add this to the culture of Springboro Schools, and we look forward to honoring many of our great graduates from the past. That's all I have, Mr. President.
With that, I think we move to item 10.1, executive session, to consider the appointment, employment dismissal, discipline, promotion, or compensation of a public employee or official. Is there a motion to approve?
Salute.
Second. Okay. Discussion. There will be no action following that, just my standard reminder that obviously everything gets discussed. Executive session should remain confidential.